Okay, well before we begin the pledge of allegiance, let's just have a moment of silence and remembrance of all the violence and tragic loss of life that's happened in this nation this last week.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard. So we don't have any minutes that we need to approve. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, there weren't any revisions, but you did have a document submitted after the original agenda went out, and that was the planning and zoning commission minutes on the fairgrounds marketplace, which is item 8B. That was delivered to you and also placed in the drop box and put on the ground.
Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, mayor, council.
Okay, there's no special reports, so I guess we'll start with public invited to be heard. So James Johnston is the first person on the list, followed by Georgetta Johnson.
My name is James Johnston. My name is James Johnston. My address is nowhere. We're staying in a motel right now because we can't find a place to live. And Susan Spalding helped us find the place we were in for three months till everything fell apart there and we had to move out. And so now we're still looking for another place to live. And pretty soon, we're going to be parking our car right in front of the city building here and sleeping in our car, so you guys know where we're at. But anyway, I think that of all the years that I've been here, 65 years that I've lived here, I have volunteered for the Longmont Hospital, for the police department. I was on the city Longmont Housing Board and on the senior board, and I've seen everything grow, and even all the rent growing out of sight. And so at this time, we are not able to find anything we can even pay for, although I would like to pay for a place to stay. And as I said, we're staying in the motel right now, and that's going to be shortly, we're going to be out of that because I can't afford it. So I would like to know if anybody has any ideas they can help me with. And thank you for your time today, and I hope that you can come up with something. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council, or mayor and city council, and he's telling you the truth. On the 4th of July, we were given 20 days over at the apartments across from the hospital because they had sewer and water problems, and I told her how could we find something? So we got two storages, and they said they would move our stuff out if we didn't, and we've looked, we've tried PMP, PML, we've been doing with senior, we've been dealing with Susan Spalding, I talked to two. My car had the alternator fall out last Saturday, or quit when my, I took my husband to dialysis. I had to go to the big O, and they told me of a couple people, and I tried them too, and they have nobody, so there's got to be a place for us. Lord, help us. This is just very interesting. We're staying at a motel where there isn't, we have to eat out most of the time, and I have to be careful, and my husband's going to dialysis, so, you know, this is a wonderful city. There's got to be help for us. This is very interesting. We wouldn't even be coming if we weren't having the issues, I guess. Maybe that's where you've got to help other people too, you know? So there's got to be help. This is just real interesting, and we can't, my husband can't die over this. I mean, thank the Lord, he did go to hospital the other night for an infection. So there's got to be help. This is a wonderful town. And some way, somehow, the housing can't be so expensive that a person can't pay for it, because we don't want you to support us. We want to support ourselves. So we came tonight, this is, it's embarrassing in a way, but in a way, it's telling the truth. It's what we're all about, is making this city a wonderful city. So some way, somehow, there's got to be help. Lord bless you precious people, because like I said, it's a wonderful city to live here.
I think it's Al Croissant.
Good evening. I'm Al Croissant. I live at 116 12th Avenue here in Longmont. I just want to compliment the, you know, we hear a lot about the police department throughout the nation, I just want to say that our Longmont Police Department is the best. And also whoever is responsible for the paths being, the bike paths being taken care of here in Longmont, I've watched them go up bit at a time, and there is a lot of work to putting a path in. It isn't just grading something, putting cement down. So I've watched it, and whoever is responsible for that, I'd just like to say thank you, because I can, I can go out of my house, get on the street for maybe two blocks, and I can ride 17 miles round trip on just the pass, and for this, I am very grateful, and I want to thank everybody that had anything to do with the completion of them.
I'm Malcolm Morrison. I'm at 9356 Rogers Road. I just have a few comments on the fairgrounds marketplace annexation, we're properties in a rural enclave that is kind of being annexed around both on, from Nelson Golden on the north side and the marketplace on the south. I have a few things to point out, you know, we would like to keep the integrity of our neighborhood and the character of it. I personally don't oppose the annexation, but I just think that, you know, it can be approached in a way that's mutually beneficial to all. First of all, I'd like to bring up traffic. There was a study on the north, for the north side of Rogers Road annexation by the Nelson Golden that showed if they got their high density, they were going to see maybe 2,700 cars a day with no access other than through Rogers Road out to Hoover. There was no access from that subdivision or that high density out to Hoover. Rogers Road's pretty small, 2,700 cars a day is probably doubles what it has now, and that was the first thing that was kind of a concern, and how you were going to address that. I know that there's some proposal from the fairgrounds annexation with high density and a spur that goes into Rogers Road also. Is that adding another 2,700 cars a day, and how do you guys look at that? I don't know if it's going to be that much, half that much, and if that's the case, is Longmont going to just annex Rogers Road? Shouldn't that be the first thing you do? If you're going to put all this traffic in to our neighborhood, you know, you're affecting our lifestyle, and you know, it's a big deal. And we really don't know how Rogers Road would handle it, and if you widen the road, you make it four lanes, you know, our houses are going to be 25 feet from the road, and that's not, that I would oppose. And I think you guys need to think about the big picture before you just try to, you know, grab these annexations and how the traffic flows. And I don't really see how it can be done without changing the character of our neighborhood, and that's kind of in the, you know, one of the charters of, you know, Longmont. We want to keep neighborhoods as they are, we're a rural enclave, we're in the county, and at some point, I'm sure we're all going to be swallowed up by annexation, but we still have these nice, you know, you know, hobby farms or whatever, acre and a half lots, and we're going to be surrounded, and we know it's going to happen, we just want it to be done intelligently. Point number two would be development in and around the floodplain. We're in a floodplain, we have groundwater at two feet. When you guys start paving everything and you're raising grade, we're going to be in the low marshy land somewhere between Home Depot and the drainage at St. Brain. I know they're going to bring engineers and say everything can work, you know, do we have an equal opportunity to hire our own engineers and say, you know what, it's not going to necessarily work? There are different opinions and different ways to look at it. Myself being an engineer, I know if you build everything up, you're going to have a hard time, and I think that should be looked at.
Thank you.
And just in...
Your three minutes is up. When the red light comes on.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Jim Williams. I live at 9249 Rogers Road here in Longmont. Like Mr. Croissant, I'd like to give some kudos to some people tonight, but it's the fire crews who have been working up in the canyon up near Netherland who have done an amazing job over the past few days to keep that fire from spreading, and I think we all have a lot of thanks that we need to be giving to them tonight. Also, like the previous speaker, I want to ask you to consider the impacts of the fairgrounds marketplace annexation on Rogers Road. I and my wife moved with our five-year-old son to a small farm, farmette, on Rogers Road recently, and we did so because these places are rare and extremely hard to find now. My understanding of what's happening with this annexation is that potentially there's going to be a road running through Dry Creek Road, potentially extended and running through one of my neighbor's yards, potentially connecting to Rogers Road, and then going, I don't know where from there, requiring also that Rogers Road would need to be widened, taking part of my front yard, something that we have worked very hard for over many, many years. I just hope that you will consider that as you're listening to all of the different plans and studies that may or may not have been done around the impacts on our properties. The groundwater is a major issue for us. It is two, three, four feet down maybe where we are. We have sump pumps that go almost all the time, even in the hot dry weather. Impacts of major development around us are going to be, are going to be significant, and we don't know what they are. So I would just ask you to please consider all those impacts. Please don't run a road through people's property to Rogers Road that's going to dump a lot of cars onto Rogers and make it a much more dangerous road and make it necessary to widen Rogers Road. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Gallagher from 9376 Rogers Road here in Longmont. In the past week, we've put together a neighborhood statement, letter of concern, that's been signed by 15 residences, including Mr. Williams and Mr. Morrison from Rogers Road, with 29 signatures. And the gist of the letter in three minutes has to do with the concerns raised about flooding and traffic already, that very often, they don't talk about the water underneath us. They keep talking about the water flowing above the ground. That's not what we're worried about. When you put two heavy buildings in front of us and behind us, the ground is a sponge, and we're left in the middle, we're going to become a marsh. At the September 2015 community meeting for the fairgrounds marketplace annexation, we raised concerns about traffic, flood, the density, the easements behind our houses, and you guys were told that there were no concerns, or the planning commission was told that citizens raised no concerns at that meeting. At the June 22 planning meeting, we learned that the buffer zones behind our houses had been reduced, we learned that the drainage plan had changed, now there's ponds behind our floodplain homes. The Dry Creek Ron, which we were told wasn't a concern, has now been drawn all the way to the property, and Karen Guthrie told the planning commission that yes, indeed, that road is planned to go through that property at some point. We learned all of that after it had already been pushed through. And so we have a concern, and we've created this letter, which we can share with you, and the petition, so I won't take up too much more of your time with it, but in the goals of envision Longmont for a hazard-prone area, it says that you're going to take extra care with that to mitigate impacts. In the code, for the land development code, in addition to protecting our property rights, it also says that you're going to be careful about zoning next to agricultural lands and preserving the agricultural heritage and zoning on the floodplain. And we're just concerned that this process has run roughshod around us, and that envision Longmont has drawn a grid around us, and no one's ever discussed it with us. And once these annexations go through, it's a domino effect for the rest of us, and we need to speak up now to stop this when it starts, ask them to reapply, and start this process over where our voices are actually heard, registered, and addressed. And I'll hand this to staff to pass out to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, city council. Jose Betea from 471 Main Street. Thank you, I'm here back again to talk on behalf of the Colorado Latino Festival and to ask for your vote on the affirmative to support us with the $5,000 we have left to be able to break even on our expenses. In these last two weeks, we've been getting a lot of feedback about the festival, a lot of great stuff, and a lot of people are looking forward to the next one. So the city has been pretty tight with our event, and our goal was to be able to show Longmont as a more diverse and inclusive community, to create this event, to bring communities together and be able to learn from each other. So that's what's been happening, and as far as next year's event, from the feedback that we've been getting, we're very happy to announce that we have a 100% retention of our vendors and our sponsors for next year, so that's a great point on our way to be a lot more sustainable for next year, and we wouldn't have to be doing this. But... have to be doing this. But nevertheless, I want to thank you all for being supportive in other ways, being supportive of the chamber, on its programs, on us being able to have our office, which has been very successful. And just wanted to emphasize the importance of having started this event, whether it's me or anybody else running it in the years coming. It was the start of something very beautiful and important, especially for the Latino community, who, one of our key components was our March of the Flags, where we had the US flag and the Latin American flags marching from one side to the other of the festival. And it was to show solidarity. It was to show diversity. And it was to show that we could live right next to each other and live in harmony. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Christine? Cara Lieber?
Christine Cavalier, Longmont resident. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. I did not get the memo that we were not talking about marijuana tonight, but I'm here, so I figured I might as well bring up my discussion points that I wanted to. I have three points for you to seriously contemplate before deciding to move forward with lifting the ban on marijuana here in Longmont. First, as I mentioned on June 28 council meeting, I think Longmont can generate more tax revenue in the long term by differentiating our city from our neighboring communities that do have marijuana dispensaries. Right now, with the adoption of Envision Longmont, our city is poised to become a strong economic leader in not only the region, but also the state. With your unanimous approval of this comprehensive plan, I know you all believe Longmont's future is bright. You heard Jessica Erickson from LADP sing the praises of Envision Longmont. She highlighted a few factors as being important in the comprehensive plan. Envision Longmont sends groundwork to provide, quote, "the workforce that is needed in order for businesses to thrive in our community," and also provides "the dedication to preserving Longmont's unique character and quality of life," end quote. Jessica also praised the city staff and consultants for their, quote, "innovative approach taken here in identifying solutions that will serve this community for many coming years." So why not take an innovative approach at raising tax revenue that is different from our neighboring communities? I wanted to validate my theory that Longmont could generate more tax revenue by not lifting the marijuana ban. So I decided to speak with Jessica Erickson. She stated that when companies learn Longmont has a ban in place, quote, "their ears perk up and they become more interested," end quote. She feels the current ban helps her differentiate Longmont from her neighboring communities. So I ask you, Mayor Coombs and council members, why would you want to risk all the hard work, effort, time, and money that was put into Envision Longmont by lifting the ban? Why not give Envision Longmont the greatest chance for success? Another part of Envision Longmont is the redevelopment of targeted regional zones and corridors. Since some council members voiced their concerns about changing Longmont's character if the ban is lifted, Councilmember Finley said, quote, "I don't want to see dispensaries on Main Street. No one does." So I ask, if not on Main Street, then when, where would these dispensaries be located? Would having a dispensary in a shopping center or targeted redevelopment zone discourage other businesses from operating there? A question I believe needs to be answered. Lastly, guiding principle number four of Envision Longmont is a safe, healthy, and adaptable community. After speaking with various law enforcement agencies and healthcare professionals, I would argue that the allowing of marijuana sale within the city limits of Longmont would be in direct opposition to this guiding principle. Thank you so much once again for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. That ends the first call. Public invited to be heard. So now we're on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor Coombs, your first item is 8A, which is ordinance 201648, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Longmont, Colorado Storm Drainage Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2016, and pledging the storm drainage revenues and certain other revenues of the city for the payment of the bonds. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for July 26. Item 8B is ordinance 201649, a bill of ordnance, an ordinance conditionally approving the Fairgrounds Marketplace, generally located west of Hoover Street, north of Lykan's Gulch, and south of Rogers Road, and zoning the property CR, commercial, regional, and R3 residential high density. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for July 26. Item 8C is Resolution 201672, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city, the City of Boulder, and Boulder County for grant funding to reduce domestic violence. Item 8D is approved one capital improvement program amendment, which is TRPO 92, Boston Avenue Connection. And staff does not have a need to pull any items.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move the consent agenda.
All right, the consent agenda is, Councilmember Bagley?
I'd actually like to pull item B, only because there's people here that are concerned. I think it just, we should have a brief discussion.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, we can have that brief discussion or have it at second reading where there's a public hearing. That's probably more appropriate to do.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded.
So you're not pulling any items?
Pardon?
So you're not pulling any items?
Councilmember Bagley?
I don't know what's going on tonight, but usually when a council member asks to pull something, this will be the first time in five and a half years that I've sat on council that a council member was not permitted to pull something from the agenda. So if we're going to start that, that would just concern me about the way we get along as a council. Second of all, I believe people here, including yourself, Councilmember Santos, the comment is made routinely that the time for discussion is at first reading. And so this is first reading, and I don't want to hear that. If this, if we don't have discussion tonight, I would ask that you not bring that up at second meeting when we're having the sausage, making sausage during the second reading. So those are my only two thoughts. So I'd like to pull it.
Well, it's up to the person who made the motion to vote on it. Okay, I think we have to vote on it the way it is.
I'm on to speak. I'm just waiting for your acknowledgement.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, Councilmember Bagley, you may have been on for five and a half years. This has happened quite a bit, and I understand the need for discussion. If you want to have discussion, then I'll take that. We can remove 8B. But what I would suggest is that it'd be a short discussion, and whether, how it's voted up or down, we go from there. However, there will be more time for public input. Now is not the time to have direct conversations with either the applicant or anyone else that comes forward. It's us with questions to staff. So, and again, more of that is better to have at a public hearing than at first reading. Consent agenda is that, is just that, to consent to move it forward. If you're pulling it to remove it, to vote it down, make that note.
Councilmember Moore?
I think I have to agree with Councilmember Bagley. If a council member wants to have some questions answered from staff or some discussion among council members, I think it's appropriate. We do have to be careful in this one because there is an appeal to this P and Z motion. So we have to make sure that our communication is not going to interfere with any quasi-judicial action that's going to come to council later.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Again, Councilmember, I don't know this is coming from. I'm not against this.
I said that we could go ahead.
No, I know. I'm just saying that there's some implication here that I'm intending on voting for it. It's just, again, I don't know where it's coming from. So we can go ahead and vote, and we'll deal with it.
Okay. Okay, so we're voting for approving the consent agenda minus item 8B. Okay, so let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is, are your ordinances on second reading? The first one is ordinance 201647, a bill of ordnance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016. And it looks like Teresa Malloy has a short presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council. Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. And we don't normally make a presentation on our appropriations as they are pretty routine matters. However, this one is quite large, so we thought we'd spend just a few minutes briefing you on this one. So this appropriation totals $123 million, bringing our total 2016 budget to $435.9 million. The appropriation includes both new dollars, so things that you have never seen before, as well as our carryover. The new dollars total $1.57 million. And we did call those out separately. We listed those first on the agenda for you so they didn't get buried in that rest of that carryover. So the carryover makes up the rest of it. So that carryover is about $121.6 million. So again, this is carryover of funds that were previously appropriated in 2015. Some of them are encumbrances, some of them are not encumbrances. And our dollars that were budgeted for that specific purpose, they just, that purpose was not completed in 2015, and we need to carry these over to complete the project. Many of these are CIP projects, but not all of it is CIP. There is one CIP amendment, which was on consent. That was for TRPO 92, the Boston Avenue Connection. That is new dollars. So that is in that $1.57 million that I just spoke about that was new dollars. Also wanted to let you know that because this does include GID as well as the Urban Renewal Authority, you have two items on your general business then to take action on those, those two budget items as those boards. So with that, I did want to let you know that we do have several members of staff in the audience if you have any specific questions.
Councilmember Christensen?
This is a very small question, but I meant to ask last time. What is the item Cultural Task Force under Community Services for $25,000?
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Christensen, can you tell me what page you're looking on, please?
I'm looking at 247 of my packet.
Mine is not.
Yeah, it doesn't have the, the other one. That's the problem. They often get cut off.
I'm going to let Sandy answer that so she knows where it's at and what it is.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, the Cultural Task Force is one of the task forces that Harold put together when he first started as city manager. The cultural, this particular Cultural Task Force has been working on the city's attributes program. We've put together the City of Longmont University, as well as a peer support group.
I remember now.
This is, we didn't quite get all the money spent last year that we had allocated. And so we're pulling some of it over, mostly to finish a lot of the work on the attributes, sort of the marketing pieces and the final pieces for peer support.
Thank you. I remember now. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to turn off your mic, please? Okay, I guess I'll move ordinance, oh, excuse me. I'm getting my head. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on ordinance 201640? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 201640. Now I'll go ahead and move ordinance 201640. And we have a second? Okay.
Is it 40 or 47?
It's... Forty-seven. Okay. Correct. Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. So now we're-
You're on to consent agenda, Mayor Coombs. And the item removed from consent was O201649, which is the Fairgrounds Marketplace Annexation Ordinance. And staff is here to address questions. I think Dawn and Katie are both here.
Councilmember Bagley?
I have a disclosure to make.
Sure.
Here's your mic, please.
You are the developer.
So probably you've got to turn off your mic so she can get in. Councilmember Peck?
I met with Eugene, the city attorney, and I had ex parte meeting with the, I can't pronounce his name, Brucke, or the gentleman who actually owns the property over the phone. But I was told it was okay because it was about annexation, which is a legislative matter. But I also had conversations with the Transportation Department and planning and zoning about the roads. So I would like council to decide whether you want me to recuse myself or not.
I think you have to, you either, you make the decision.
Yeah.
You think you can be objective.
Yeah.
Oh, I was advised that. I could let council to decide. All right, then I'm staying.
I'm fine. Councilmember Bagley?
Are we moving on? Are we talking about this issue?
We're moving on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted, the reason I pulled this, a couple of, I want to ask staff some questions. Whenever there's a dozen or so folks in the audience with concerns, I'm just going to ask the questions since during public invited to be heard, there's no interaction. So first of all, my question, and that is the reason why I wanted to pull it, is that there's two options. We, by, we can either, we are, by voting for it tonight, we are automatically granting a variance to the traffic study, correct?
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, that's not correct.
Okay, correct me then, because in the packet it says, "Council may determine that it would prefer to grant this variance at the time of platting and development plan submittal." So I just want to make sure.
So I've got a handout that might be helpful.
Mayor, if I could interrupt, what was the action on Councilmember Peck's disclosure? I didn't quite catch that.
Yeah, we pretty much said if she was comfortable with it, we would trust her judgment.
Okay. I'm looking at the council rule of procedure. The council member can decide, or upon full disclosure, the basis for announced abstention, the requesting council member may, however, mean not request that the council vote on the propriety and necessity of abstention. So I'm just trying to figure out what happened.
It said may. She just decided.
Did she take the decision to herself? I just want to make sure I understand what happened.
I was under the impression that we granted her the ability to make the decision herself, that we would trust her ethics to-
Okay, so Councilmember Peck decided she can be a fair and impartial. I'm asking because if she wanted to abstain, she must physically remove herself from the chamber. So I just want to make sure we're on the same-
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Sorry for the interruption.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. The reason that I asked for council to make that decision is that I didn't want you to come back later on me and say, that was the point of full disclosure, and I am comfortable with council deciding that. If you're not, I don't want to make that decision myself if you, but if you think that's okay, then I will make it and stay. Okay?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. My only concern is that if some way, somehow, either side, if there is an appeal or an eventual litigation, that this may-
You may want to get on the record maybe a little more fuller description of what that is, the general principle being that that information should be shared with the public and council.
Okay, that's just my concern.
Councilmember Peck.
For further disclosure, I guess the meeting with Transportation and the Planning Department was about the road and the concern.
Yeah. Councilmember Santos.
No, and what I was saying is that you talked to Transportation, and did you talk to members of P&amp;Z as well? About the road, which is in a, we're talking zoning, not annexation. Am I correct in that? Because there's two different things, this has two different things.
Correct. I believe the concept plan is part of the annexation.
Is that correct?
Yes. That's where the road is shown.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Another thing is that we're voting on a related topic tonight, so just because there's a, an outstanding quasi judicial proceeding or action ongoing, doesn't mean that we're supposed to just stop asking questions and vote tonight in the blind. So what I'm hearing is not anything unrelated to the actual vote this evening. So, I mean, thank you for your caution, Councilmember Peck, but I would argue that everything's just fine, from what I've heard. So just to be clear then, option one, if we vote tonight, it's option one, is what we're voting on, correct? Basically approving the annexation ordinance as it is currently written, which means council would approve the existing ordinance and consider the transportation benchmark issue at a future date, when the property is being platted for development.
That is correct.
Okay. So my first question is, and I know the answer to these, but I want to make sure that people.
You tell me what I'm supposed to say then?
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, so first of all, at what point, if we pass option one, would there be a discussion regarding the traffic pattern, and based upon whatever platted development proposal comes forward?
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Proton Bagley, the presentation by staff, we would note that is an issue that you would like us to cover, and we would go over it at our presentation during the public hearing and second reading of this item.
That's not, that's, okay. Next question, widening of Rogers Road, when would that decision be made, if at all?
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Proton Bagley, Nick Wolfram is here tonight. He could probably give you some information, if you would like, on this item. But what I could also say is that we could discuss that or talk about the potential impacts of that at that same public hearing in two weeks, or we could talk about it tonight.
Well, I guess my question is, but even then, we're not, even in two weeks, we can talk about it, but even then, in two weeks, if this passes on second reading, nobody's approving an increased traffic, nobody's approving what's going to be built there, nobody's approving a widening of Rogers Road, correct? This is just bringing the property into the city and saying, whatever's there, will be in our city.
So since it covers two things, I'll answer part, and I'm gonna let Nick answer part. When you are annexing this property, you're approving the concept plan, as long as the development meets all of our rules and regulations in the Land Development Code and complies with the concept plan, then that is what we would process through planning and through Planning Commission, and could be approved if it met all the rules. To speak to the widening, and when that would happen, I will let Nick answer that.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Nick Wolfram, Director of Civil Engineering Services with Public Works Natural Resources. This section of roadway, Rogers Road, from Hoover to Airport Road, is on the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan as a collector. I can tell you that there are currently no plans in our CIP to do any widening of the road. As several have said, it's not currently annexed to the city, it's Boulder County roadway. I will say that the traffic study, the street transportation portion update that we did a couple of years ago and presented to City Council that identified projects like widening of Hoover in our, for our CIP, did not identify any needs for that. I would say off the top of my head, the only, when that road is annexed to the city, the primary thing I would see as far as any widening would be the addition of bike lanes, because it is a fairly popular bike route, and it'd be a good multimodal connection out to Airport Road, which is a good commuter route. So that's really about the only item that I would see that would probably drive that. But we have no current plans for it, and none of our studies have indicated any sort of widening from two lanes to four lanes or anything like that. It would be our standard collector section.
Thank you. And since you're the road guy, also the comment that there's a road that ends at somebody's house that we're going to, by voting yes tonight, it's going to somehow lead to us, you know, exercising eminent domain to put a road through the location where currently sits a house and a residence. Is that in here at all?
No, once again, no. The North-South Road that's there, which is, pardon? Dry Creek, excuse me, thank you. Dry Creek Drive is another road that's on our comprehensive plan as a collector road that is a piece of the connectivity in that area. And as a comp plan road, it's kind of a line on the map, and it does just kind of generically go up there straight. Knowing that it goes through some developed property, what we would normally anticipate, and I know we've looked at this, I think of a variety of times as this property has been through the process before, numerous times, have looked at whether it might swing farther over to the west or not. So what they're showing here seems to me to make sense, that we would reserve right-of-way along that section of road, or property. The property itself could develop without that north connection up to Rogers Road. Just simply the connection out to Hoover and the connection to the south will serve that site. That what we would want is for that property to be obligated for right-of-way and their proportionate share, their half the share, cost of the extension of that road in the future. But you, just because you take that, and we've done that before, you could reserve that, not build it, and then as other property annexes and develops, and make a better idea of where the alignment of that road might be appropriate, and then at that time do it. If you don't need it, you would then vacate that right-of-way later on.
Okay, and then there was, I don't know who's the flood impact expert, that might be you too, Nick, but there was also some concerns raised based on, based on moving forward with this tonight, that it would somehow, what's, the overall general proposal would somehow impact flooding and encroach floodwaters upon the current residents located down there.
Drainage is something that we look at as, as public improvement plans come through. I heard several of the property owners talk not only about surface drainage, but about groundwater, and I know groundwater is high in that area, and we would require, as far as the public improvement plans and the, and the site plans, as that comes along and the engineering work is done, to meet our drainage criteria and to address the issues of groundwater in that area for their own site development.
So what I'm hearing is you feel relatively comfortable that all the, you feel relatively comfortable, or staff is, what I'm hearing is that widening Rogers Road, the road placement, and the flooding impact are concerns that, in your minds, have been resolved. The increased traffic, that's still outstanding, but we are going to determine that at a future date.
And what I would say is that the time that we deal with more of those drainage issues is normally at the time of plating, and is the design of public improvements. We don't have all of that done here. But what I'm saying, what I am saying is, as far as traffic or those things, there's nothing that we would see as unusual enough that should not be able to be addressed appropriately through the development process.
All right, great. And then with that, my concerns are resolved. I move ordinance, I need, I move that we pass ordinance 2016-49.
It's been moved to second. Councilmember Christensen.
On my page 98, there are, this is a question for staff. They talk about regarding the traffic issue. Two projects, two CIP projects, T122 and 123, and there's no actual explanation of what those are in regard to, the city currently has a CIP project identified, T122, that is partially funded, that would add capacity to Hoover Street. Is that the slight widening you're talking about?
Yes.
And then the benchmark violation could ultimately be mitigated with T123, which is currently unfunded. Could you explain a little bit about 123?
Projects that we're talking about are widening to the Hoover and Nelson intersection, and widening ultimately of Hoover Road from the intersection with the diagonal up to Boston, the Boston Avenue intersection, Rogers Road intersection. And that was a project that was identified, as I mentioned, in that traffic analysis, the traffic study that was done, with the traffic report, the updated the street plan, master plan, several years ago. And that was one of the streets, one of the projects, both of those are projects, the intersection projects and the widening, that were identified on the last update of the street fund sales tax. They were also projects that were identified recently when Joni and Planning brought to you and updated the transportation community investment fee, as projects that would be funded by that. They're currently unfunded in a five-year CIP. I will also say that when we talked about these before, we acknowledged that there are three components probably to the funding of these projects. A local share, which would be out of our street fund sales tax, a development share due to the growth in the community that would be from the transportation community investment fee. We also acknowledged that there was some regional impact from regional pass-through traffics on these. And so we've always said from the beginning, we'd need to go after some state or federal money through Dr. Cog to help fund these projects. So I want to be clear that that is one of the things that we're working on. We recently just got notified by Dr. Cog that they had some funding that had become available, and we were the next level project on that, and we're working on, with them on that, for a preliminary design analysis of that corridor through there, as long, as well as the State Highway 119 corridor from South Parkway to Nelson Road, which were those major arterial widenings that we're looking at. So we're working with Dr. Cog, with the ability to get $300,000 of Cog money to come in and help us take a look at those, and I think by getting that funding from a planning standpoint, it hopefully sets us up more to go to Cog also for a proportionate share of some of the construction costs in the future. But that, those are the projects that were anticipated to come in and help address the traffic along that road, along that section of Hoover and Nelson.
Okay. Could I suggest something? This area from Home Depot to King Supers is my turf. I go there almost every day. And yesterday, I went to see the movies, to the movie last night at the new shopping center, or the new Village of the Peaks. I was very happy to see that Village of the Peaks has a north-south road through it, so you can go all the way from Wyatt's Wet Goods to Sam's and connect to Nelson Road. The thing, the main reason people use Dry Creek Road at all is to navigate the Byzantine business of trying to get from Home Depot over to Target, over to King Supers, JCPenney's, et cetera, because each one of those is impossible to get to except through Dry Creek Road, because there is no north-south road that goes through there. You have to go several miles out of your road, out of your way, and go out to Dry Creek Road. It's enormously time-consuming, and it puts more traffic on Dry Creek Road than it is necessary. If there were internal connections between these shopping centers, north-south, it would be much better.
And Councilmember Christensen, you nailed it. And one of the things that is required of this development, because you'll know, you know that as you go through along between, between Home Depot and the pads, like the tire place in front of it, there's that north-south access. And on the north side of Home Depot is that driveway out onto Hoover, which was originally intended to be a right-in, right-out driveway, but was approved initially as a, as a full movement and an interim condition. And that one's a tough one to make a left out on. And one of the things this site would do, is if you look at their concept plan, would continue that internal, it's not a public street, but that internal lane through there, and that would allow us to take that access on, at Home Depot and make that a right-in, right-out, which it should be. And that traffic then, if I'm leaving Home Depot, would go up through there and then come out to that new signalized intersection that would be a part of this development. And so by doing that, that helps us get some of the traffic out of that shopping center northbound, without them having to go all the way southbound and go back down through the Nelson and Hoover intersection again. So that's one of the improvements in the traffic flow that we would generally expect to see from this development.
Will you be doing that all the way through the Target Shopping Center and the King Supers Shopping Center?
It.
Because it's going in between those.
Yes, and it continues that, that same driveway. If I come, if I, right now, if I was leaving Target, and I wanted to go north, I'd go north across that road and up past Home Depot to make my left turn out at there. Instead, I'd just go a little bit farther and make the turn out at Signal.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was looking at these different options, and option 2B, I would like to ask about this. It says that this, that a condition of approval would require staff to evaluate the traffic benchmark at the time of development, with the applicant at time of development. I'm wondering if this wouldn't be a better option, because even though we have a concept plan, at this point, we don't really know what's going to be in that concept, what the whole development is going to look like. So this would, at the time of development, you would be able to address all the adverse impacts, depending upon what is actually going in? Does that make sense, or?
So Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, so let, if I may, could I just take a minute to just go over this real quick?
Yes, please.
So the, the options correlate to the three options in your council packet, approve, approve with conditions, deny, okay? So option one, which was talked about earlier by Mayor Proton Bagley, is that as the ordinance is currently written, if council approves this, then when development occurs on the property, it has to go up to Planning Commission, they'll make a recommendation, and it gets to come back to City Council, and you get to make a decision on the benchmark. That's how it's currently written, okay? So you'll get the benefit of having staff review and the Planning Commission make a recommendation on a project, okay? That could either be done carte blanche, over an entire subdivision of the property, or you could do it every time a project comes in. So every lot, every time it develops, it could come back up here and you guys could take a look at it. That's option one. Option two is to grant a waiver to the traffic benchmark at this time, so this is the 2A, okay? And what that would do is that you are basically saying that you're making a finding that, and this is in the council communication, that the impacts of this development are less than 5% of an impact to the entire system out there, and a waiver is warranted. The city staff in the council comm agrees with those findings, that's in your council communication, but as a recommendation, we would ask that you make a condition in the ordinance that says that the applicant has to agree to make two eastbound left-turn lanes from their property that allows left turns to head north out of their property on Hoover. They have to agree to that. That has to be a condition. So that's, that's one way. So then, you're taking care of it now. You're saying that based on what their traffic consultant and our transportation engineers have looked at, based on what we expect to see developed out here on this property, that you don't need to see it again. It's done. Just let them build their onsite improvements, and make sure they build those two left-turn lanes. Staff, you take care of everything through the public improvement process, we're done. We don't need to see it anymore. Okay, that's option 2A. 2B is the staff-level waiver. You give us the ability to review every project that comes through on this property, and we make the decision based on the site-specific information that's given at the time of development. we expect to see developed out here on this property, that you don't need to see it again. It's done. Just let them build their onsite improvements and make sure they build those two left-turn lanes. Staff, you take care of everything through the public improvement process. We're done. We don't need to see it anymore. Okay? That's option 2A. 2B is the staff-level waiver. You give us the ability to review every project that comes through on this property, and we make the decision based on the site-specific information that's given at the time of development for each of those lots, and we determine whether or not they can mitigate in any way. They may not be able to alleviate the benchmark, but there may be some other things that they can do to make it better or not as impactful. And staff makes that decision. Okay? That's option 2B. Option 2C is the city council could grant a full variance to this benchmark. You could say, we're going to let you have a free pass and not do anything with the benchmark. We don't need double lefts out of there, and you know what? You just go ahead and develop, and we'll take care of all of it. So that's 2C. You let the city take care of it. And then option three goes along with option three, which is deny the annexation. So those are the five options. In the council comm, city staff recommended the 2A is what we recommended in your council communication. So hopefully that's helpful.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The only reason I pulled this, and the only reason we're talking about option one, to be clear, and I don't speak for everybody, but I think we're voting this through, because we want to make sure that our neighbors understand that we're not signing it off tonight. We want to stay involved in the project to make sure everything goes well. So that's why I made the motion. That's why I pulled it. That's why I'm voting yes.
What seems to me that option 2A would be a better option. I mean, we still have the condition in the ordinance to construct, I mean, basically, it gets the traffic stuff solved and right on the, and if we just choose that route tonight, then it's, I think, clearer path going forward. Does anybody else have any thoughts on it?
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I agree with you. We need to make sure that they do those two left-hand, two eastbound left-turn lanes at the Hoover intersection. And I think-
Well, even if we choose option one, we can still do-
Later.
That later, too.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I think 2A would be okay. I think 1 would also be okay. My concern is that in reading through the notes, it says quite clearly that they didn't meet the standards for the comprehensive, I mean, for the, the- Concept, sorry. No, not the benchmark. The initial concept plan. They didn't have enough there. There's also the whole issue of the flood plain. I mean, there are just a lot of things here, so it's really important that we stay as involved in this, because it is, we don't want to have, there's also the issue of building homes in the airplane zone. I mean, there are a lot, this is a very complicated thing. That's why it has taken so long for this to come through. But I think everybody feels like this is a very good use of the space on Hoover, and even going back, provided it doesn't affect the people on Rogers Road. And so the most that we can do to continue to have council involved in this and hear more elaborate ideas about how to deal with the drainage issues and things like that, the better we are off. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
I think I'm going to let the motion stand, only because, like I said, I'd like to hear from planning and zoning. Leaves options open for both the developer and the residents, and it just lets the project move forward.
All right, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, now it's time for general businesses.
Mayor Coombs?
I think we can get through this.
Your first item is General Improvement District Number One Board, so I need you to recess.
Okay, I guess I'll move that we recess as Longmont City Council and convene as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District. Okay, let's vote on that. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your, this item is Resolution LGID 2016-03, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the district for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016. Staff does not have a presentation. I believe Teresa Malloy covered this in her prior remarks.
Councilmember Moore?
I move RLGID 2016-03.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Okay, now we need to adjourn as, so I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District and reconvene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. All right, let's vote on that. That passes seven to zero.
Councilmember?
Let me read this first. This is Resolution LURA 2016-01, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the authority for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of Resolution LURA 2016-1.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Okay, I'll make a motion that we, Councilmember, okay, I'll make the motion that we adjourn out of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council. All right, let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. Okay, now it's time for final call. I'm publicly invited to be heard. Is anybody in the public who'd like to come and speak at this time? Okay. Come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Vandepfeffer, 1917, Rogers Road. I've lived at Rogers Road for 30 years now, from when it was a very rural street to a very busy street at this point, because the city has grown completely around us. We're Boulder County. We're not City of Longmont, but we support the community. Both my kids have grown up in my home. They both work in the City of Longmont now. They're grown. I have a grandson who's growing up at the same property. Like I say, we've lived and supported the community all this time. We've seen everything go on around us. We've put up with all the traffic. We've put up with all the development and stuff around us, with the Liking and Sculch Project and all of that kind of stuff. And the one comment that she made about having a road come through the shopping centers at Target and Home Depot and coming out on our rural road as a access to a shopping center is absolutely ridiculous. If it comes completely through a commercial area, that's fine. But to come right through the residential area is absolutely ridiculous, and that is not anywhere near the type of community that we moved into 30 years ago. We also have Osprey on that property, which are nesting. It is a rural area, and I really think it should remain somewhat rural. I think this development with the 12-plus residences per acre is not coherent with the feel of the area and as it has been for many, many years. And like I say, I've seen the whole City of Longmont grow, our area, a lot in these 30 years. And a lot of the reasons that people live in Longmont is, and around Longmont, is because they enjoy the rural atmosphere that we have. And I think you really need to consider the density in this, in going from the commercial and have it ease into our properties, not just back upright onto it. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at final call? Public invited to be heard.
Hello, council. Good evening. My name is Mario Najera, and my home is the 9th through 2 Rogers Road. My family is the fifth-generation Lama family, and I'm the fourth-generation Najera family that I lived in Longmont all my life, born and raised. The city council members, my wife Julia Day stood in front of the Lama. I don't know if I can did this in three minutes. I know, I don't want to bore you or anything, but you know how important this is. I'm sure you do. And in front of the city council members, my wife Julia Day stood in front of the Lama Development and Planning Commissions on June 22nd and voiced concerns regarding the proposed annexation, zoning, and concept plan on the 29 acres that make up the Fairgrounds Marketplace. At the same time, also posed the question, why is Dry Creek Road drawn to our property line, with a seeming dot-dot-dot through our property to Rogers Road? So the first part of the answer was definitely connecting the Dry Creek Rogers Road as planned since the 2005 year. The vagueness of the rest was disconcerting. On the June 23rd, she left a message for Lama Planning Department. No response to date. On June 28th, she stood before you and voiced concerns regarding both the development and the road. At that time, urged the planning department to address the road concerns. We have received a follow-up communication regarding two road questions. On the evening of the 29th, she decided to retain an attorney to seek answers from the city planning department. On July 1st, attorney was able to have a conversation with the planning department and asserting a series of facts. This is the fourth time the Fairgrounds Marketplace has come for the annexation. Right away, the dedication is required to be shown on the concept plan and the annexation plan for any of the annexation. In this case, Dry Creek is planned to connect to Rogers on the City of Lama roadway system plan, so the Fairgrounds app plan is required to dedicate for this connection. There is road dedicated from north to south across the western property boundary of the Fairgrounds Marketplace. This is where the issue occurs. The Fairgrounds is a land locked to the north and partially to the west of the private property, most specifically my home and my neighbors. And as we submersed, the planned road for Dry Creek does butt up against the southern property boundary of my lot, our lot. The planned connection is a future collector with two through lanes. Lama requires a 75-foot road. For such roads, annexation applicants, developers may to dedicate all of the half, or this is the condition of annexation approval, which in my opinion, I can't see a road going through, all the way through into Rogers Road. It's just too close to our home, and I don't know if we can be able to live like that. And I don't think anybody wants to-
Thank you.
...to buy a home. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at final call? Public invited to be heard?
Hello, my name is Jim Enright, and I live at 9376 Rogers Road. And I just feel like we've been told repeatedly that we'll have an opportunity to speak somewhere down the road by council, by planning, by the planning commission. And I'm just afraid that if you vote yes on the annex the next time, you're giving the developer high-density housing. And high-density housing, once they get that, how are we ever going to change that? How are we ever going to pull back from that? High-density, right smack up against agricultural land. Think about it. It doesn't really make a lot of sense.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at final call? Public invited to be heard?
Yes. Good evening, City Council. My name is Julia Day. I live at 9322 Rogers Road. I'm speaking tonight, and as soon as I stop speaking, I'm going to go catch a plane, and I've got to be at work in Orlando, Florida tomorrow. On your public hearing on the 26th, I may be on a plane as well. I may not be able to speak. My husband, Mario, who just spoke, he and I signed the collective neighborhood statement of concern that Kevin submitted to you, Kevin Gallagher submitted to you earlier. We are really urging you all to take special consideration on improving this annexation concept plan and zoning. Mario and I have a particular concern on the road. We still feel that it's very vague and that you, we'd ask you not to approve this annexation without approving the other property to the cell, so that there can be an actual road that's drawn through. But I'm here tonight to thank every single one of you, because the one thing that I really appreciate is that you've listened and you've heard the concerns, and you've addressed that. And that's really, really important. And so I sincerely said I've got to wait and make you stay another three minutes so you can let me thank you. So I thank you for doing that. I also at work have a motto that we've all adopted, and we call it fondly hashtag positive impact. And so I try not to get involved unless I think I can have a positive impact. So what I'd ask you, as you're involved in this, and ask the developer, it should be the same. It should be a positive impact on the neighbors. There should be a positive impact on the entire community as a whole. None of the neighbors are essentially against development, nor this particular development. We just feel that the details have not been supplied. There's questions unanswered. We have a brand-new development, a commercial development in Twin Peaks. What will this look like, and will it be successful? And this is high-density in an AE flood zone, again with standing water. So I want to thank you all for, like, listening, hearing, and I appreciate your careful consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now it's time for our mayor and council comments. First off, I'd like to ask if anybody could do coffee with council for me on July 23rd at La Vida Bella on 475 Main Street, because I've got a commitment. I'm helping out with a fundraiser for Children's Hospital that day.
Aren't I doing it that day as well?
That was with Councilmember Moore.
I'll take it.
Okay, all right. So, thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We have an important decision to make. Maria wants to know if we want to be in the parade together, the county parade. And I told her I would let her know tomorrow. The parade, I believe, is on Saturday, July 30th. So I need to hear some comments about whether you want to be in the parade or not. And-
Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town.
You're going to be out of town? What about the rest of you? You'll be out of town? You'll be in, you would be in the parade? What about you, Jeff? No. He doesn't want- He doesn't want to drive golf carts. It's not his favorite thing. What about you, Polly? Joan, sorry. Gosh, I do that all the time to you. I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay.
Is it just going to be you and I?
And Holly.
Oh, Holly. It's going to be the two of us, but it's unfortunate even though people aren't going to be here, aren't going to be with us, so.
So, there would be four of us? Okay. Thank you. I will let Maria know that there will be four of us and that we'll be needing golf carts. We just won't let Jeff drive.
That was her way of just, that was her way of getting golf carts. You thought it was about being in the parade.
No, you guys know I can't walk. We have to ride something. So, yeah. I did want to do business of the week. I haven't done that for a couple of weeks because we've run so late and I'm too tired. But, tonight it's early. I would like to make my business of the week Benny's Tacos at 345 Main Street. Just read an article about them. I'm excited to go try some street tacos at Benny's Tacos.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In respect and recognition of Councilman Santos's discussion last week about council comments being too long, I'm going to make a different kind of a motion. I want to move to direct staff to add to the next regular meeting agenda, a vote on granting funding for the Latino Festival.
Point of order.
Okay, Councilmember Santos. Go ahead. Councilmember Santos.
So, motion to reconsider, I mean, this motion has been brought to council before. While it's changed from 10,000 to 5,000, it's still going to the same event which has been voted down. It's inappropriate to have an additional vote.
Okay, I guess we can, I can rule on that because it's considered the same session. And, you know, a session's kind of ill-defined. You know, a session could be not just, you know, a period of time of, you know, a council session is like two years or...
That I understand, mayor, but this has been made in the last several weeks.
Right.
Again, going to the same event, the funding has changed. So, I get that there's maybe a substantive change. However, it's going to the same event which has already been voted down. And to bring back any such of reconsideration, you have to be in the affirmative or of a winning vote or in the negative of a losing vote to bring back such motion.
Well, I think you're absolutely correct. I mean, I'd like to support it, but I think, I guess I'm going to uphold your point of order.
And mayor, I would, I agree. The event was a good event. I was there for a little bit. It was a wild weekend for the Santos's going all over the place with events for children. However, having talked to at least two members of the planning committee, it just seems like the event was just a little, came off very well, but the planning needs to be a little bit better. And, you know, and members of staff, of the staff of the Latino chamber, listening to their board members to get it funded and funded properly. Again, it's not anything against the Latino chamber. I think Jose did a great job. However, coming to us several weeks after and then again with another request, again, I've been consistent that those requests need to come through the budget process. So, we don't have, as another council member here has said, we don't have pet projects that we give out money to.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was on the affirmative side of that, so I can make the motion and ask that it come back. And I would like to do that. And here's why. I was, I, my original sentiments echoed those of Councilmember Santos. But, I had the opportunity, I asked Jose, who's here tonight, and here's the information that I was able to gather that makes me want to reconsider. First of all, he did, I made the assumption that he hadn't planned and gone through the proper channels. So, he did approach the Longmont Community Foundation and talked to Eric Hazempa and asked for $5,000. Unfortunately, it was unfortunate. Others were asking. It was competitive. They were denied. Two, he went ahead and talked and filled out an application with Visit Longmont, filled out the application. Again, they were denied. Went to the city and spoke with the Multicultural Action Committee, requested multiple times, and before hearing back, his father passed, was unable to complete the process, and ran out of time. They were able, for a $45,000 budget, they were able to raise a total of $40,000. Other sponsors include First Bank, Wells Fargo, the Denver Museum, Boulder Parks and Open Space, Boulder County, the Jared Polis Foundation, City of Boulder Open Space, the Plaza Convention Center gave $5,000, Bank of the West, High Plains Bank, the Ian McKinley Law Firm, Boulder County Public Health, Denver Public Health, Broomfield Public Health, the Boulder County Farmers Market. So, there were, there were a lot of efforts extended to try to raise the funds. And then, last but not least, when it was 10,000 last time, both St. Vrain School District and Boulder Valley School District stepped up and both donated $2,500 to get them to a point where they had $5,000 left. And so, you know, hearing all that, you know, made me go, okay, they did, they did try. They were $5,000 short. There were members of the chamber and who put up, they're basically $5,000 of personal funds for a city event. I am the, I am the first to get in line and say that I don't think we should have a council contingency fund, but we do. And so, I would actually ask that we bring it back and have a vote on it. I'd like to do that.
Yeah. And, you know, we do have, like, I think $70,000 that's going to roll into the council contingency that we didn't spend last year, plus 40,000. So, there's a lot of money in there. I know that doesn't give us an excuse to spend it on this thing, but, you know, it's not like there's, and it was a great event. It did have a lot of educational component, a lot of community building, a lot of community health. You know, it wasn't just a party kind of event. It was a community-building event, and it was a very welcoming event. You just didn't have to be, you know, an Hispanic person to feel welcome there. I mean, everybody was welcome. It was a great community event. So, I guess, since Brian is the one that's bringing it back, and he was on the affirmative side of that vote, we... Okay, let's vote on that.
To bring it back.
To bring it back.
Voting on the issue tonight.
Yeah, we're just voting to bring it back. And that passes 5 to 2 with Councilmember Santos and Finley descending. Okay. Any further council comments? Councilmember Christensen?
I would like to clarify something that one of the ladies from Rogers Road misunderstood what we were talking about with the road. I specifically wanted roads to go through the commercial areas so that we could avoid having Dry Creek, which is needlessly busy, go up north and connect to Rogers Road. And I, I might hardly agree with her about keeping that area rural if possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Eugene, our discussion today regarding making motions and last call, council comments, any insight that we can try to alleviate some of that and have it some, have it somewhere in the beginning of the meeting?
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney. So, if you recall, Councilmember Santos made a suggestion, was it last week?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago about potential restrictions on the types of motions that can be made during mayor and council comments. I did give it some thought. It seemed like the core concern was no adoption of final or official action during council comments, no motions and final action. We could amend the rules of procedure to state that. In terms of timing, within the agenda, one of the concerns I heard was it happens at the end of the meeting, nobody's here. Oftentimes, it's late at night. Certainly, it's council's discretion to move that further up in the agenda. You can create a new section on the order of business. You know, I wanted to get some input from council. I'd be happy to draft amendment to the rules of procedure. In order to actually amend the rules of procedure, it needs to be introduced and then adopted. So, it would be like two readings. Certainly, this is a matter for council to decide regarding the management of its meetings. And so, be happy to answer some questions or gather further input. If you did want to move it up further in the meeting, there is a section for agenda revisions. It's not quite what it's used for now, but I think it could be broadened to allow council to make motions, to direct staff to do X, Y, and Z, put it on the agenda, future agenda. There's also first call, maybe after that, if you wanted to hear what the public had to say. You know, there's a number of different considerations. Then, you know, if it was before first call, then the public could comment on what the motion was. If it was after, you know, sometimes you get input from the public, and that raises something that council wants to act on at a future meeting and then, you know, you'd be able to capture those comments. So, you know, really a couple of considerations for council. I probably have not thought of all of them, but if we, if I get some input from council now, draft some rules of procedure, I think that could serve as a jumping board to hash it out at a future meeting.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I would hope that we take this consideration, at least either, as Eugene said, either before public invited to be heard or after public invited to be heard. What's happened in the past is that we have people that come up with requests. There's no public input. There might be a open meetings wrinkle in there that we might, might be bypassing. If someone comes up and says, I would like you to support House bill, whatever, whatever, whatever. And then council, without any information that we have, we're taking action on it. So, it's something that, but as Councilmember Peck's motion to at least put something on the agenda in council comments, it's, I would rather see those at the beginning of the meeting. So, again, so there's more public comment because in, we're in council comments, there's no other public invited to be heard. Unless we reopen it. So, I'd love to hear thoughts and comments. Just, you know, I thought this would clean some things up.
Well, I kind of like, myself, I'd prefer to do it along with, in section four, with the agenda revisions and submissions for public hearing. But, I'm fine with whether we do it before or after first reading, but I think it's better to do it before. This is my, but I'll listen to everybody else's. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I wasn't going to speak to this, but I will. As far as where this lands from Councilmember Santos's comments, I personally don't have an issue with it. At the end of the meeting, we haven't taken any legislative action. And in that respect, it means that, you know, the public wouldn't be necessarily involved with the decision anyway. Most of the time, my memory serves me correct, it's been, you know, small items, council contingency fund spending, things like that, that are not necessarily, they're not legislative, and they're not necessarily anything that is totally council consideration on those issues. So, while I'm not necessarily in favor of moving it, I am flexible. I mean, I don't think it hurts. It doesn't really matter where it's at, but I don't think it's a big problem. So, I guess I missed a lively discussion two weeks ago and a late-night session that I'm, maybe, I don't know, must have been a lot of fun to be here till after midnight. So, I was at National League of Cities Board of Directors meeting in Kansas City. We were discussing what, some findings for our task, the task force assigned to, on opioid addiction. And as you probably know, last week in Denver, there's a big article on the news and everything about how that's actually starting to hit closer to home. And I think it's, it's, it would be prudent for us to be out in front of it. I know that our, our public safety folks are working hard on it. And I just, from the stories I hear from big cities like Cleveland and Chicago, even some of the smaller east coast cities like New Britain, Connecticut, I mean, you don't think of those type of cities as being, would be a big problem, but they have huge numbers of people being addicted to not only prescription painkillers, but also, you know, the illegal heroin coming into the country. So, it's, I just want to make sure that we are on top of this because it's a huge epidemic on the east coast, and it's definitely moving west. So, let's stay on top of it. The only other comment I have about that meeting is that the federal legislative advocacy priorities this year continue to be close the online sales tax loophole, invest in local transportation projects, and protect municipal bond tax exemptions. So, as we move forward, especially the immunity bond exemption is a target right now because it's a source of funding that they haven't had before, and it's pretty ripe for rating. So, that's, as a city, we need to be also advocating our congress, our representatives to make sure that in the long run, we can continue to fund our infrastructure projects at a low cost. So, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
I share Councilman Santos's concerns about the, doing this at the, having motions brought forth at the later part of the night because, of course, we are, we are tired, and then we go home enraged about something that sprung on us. And I do think quite a few things have come up that are things that ought to be brought up when there's a public here. And most people have gone home. So, I think it would be good to, it seems most logical to me to have it be discussed at the agenda revisions and submission of documents. And that way, public could also comment on that if they wanted to. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I agree too. I think that would be a great place to put it, the agenda revisions and submission of documents. However, from the council, from our city attorney, the reason I made the motion to put it on the next agenda so that the public would see that it would be up for discussion, and we wouldn't, at the time that the motion is made, take time out of our meeting to discuss it at that point. So, that, and I thought that was good advice that he gave, was that we just make a motion to put it on the agenda.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I really think it's a good idea that we do it at the beginning of the meeting. I think it's a shame that you had to bring it up again, Councilmember Santos, because I thought we made it clear that we wanted to discuss it. And...
Well, we have to still change the rules of procedures.
Yeah, right. We do, which needs to be on our agenda. So, perhaps we should, should make it a time.
Yeah, we have to make a motion.
Perhaps it should be at a time certain so that we don't have to bring it up again. Another idea I had that made me think, made me think of this is frequently, we make motions to bring things forward or at the end, and then we never know when we'll see them again. It might be nice in the minutes for that meeting, when we make a motion to bring it back, that staff put after, you know, in parentheses, this will be heard at this time, a time certain. Because I know there have been motions that have been made that have never come back. And that concerns me as well. So, or maybe just they haven't come back yet, I should say. But, it would be nice to do that at the beginning when we're clear-headed. And so, number four works for me.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm with my fellow council members who have... Thank you Mayor Coombs, I'm with my fellow council members who have expressed that earlier in the evening's better, I mean, tonight, not a problem, 8:30, we can talk for two hours, you know, we're, we're gassed up, but if it's a, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a big issue or controversial issue and it just so happens to be 10:30, 11, 11:30, that's just bad for business. So I think that the mayor's suggestion of putting it on right there after agenda revisions, I, I'm, I'm for that, and then that way we just may, and then also, of course, you'd have to draft up council rules and procedures that basically say that motions can be made at that time to put an issue on the agenda and we can vote, and if four of us want it on the agenda, then we'll go forward, and if not, we won't. But I also want to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the people who set the agenda, you know, in general, should be the city manager and the mayor. So I think if we begin trying to manage council agendas through committee, I would want to revisit this, because I think it's appropriate that they do it.
So just to be clear, we need to change the council rules of procedure to give us that opportunity, that doesn't mean we're gonna exercise and be making motions during that time, I mean, it's probably gonna be very rare, maybe one out of every five or six meetings or something like that, and we're still gonna have our council, you know, closing comments at the end of the meeting. Okay? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you Mayor Coombs, it was good to hear everyone's opinion, opinion on this, and I would agree that number four, Eugene and I talked about this this afternoon, that probably under item four would be a good spot for it. And the reason I brought this up, Councilmember Moore, as you were, I was out of town, I had to leave early due to family commitments at home and marijuana was brought back up without, without having any knowledge. Had I known ahead of time, I probably would have asked for that, that we just jumped the agenda, talked about that, had a vote, and then I could have left. That's, that's really the main purpose of this, is that also, the public wasn't aware, other members of council weren't aware what, what was going on, so, you know, I, I would hopefully like to see this come back, you know, I don't know if we have to talk about it anymore, but at least at a first reading, or at least, or at least perhaps ahead of time, a draft of what is being proposed so we all can see it, and then anybody can submit their comments to the city attorney, and then go forward with it, I think it will definitely, if there's not too much debate during item four, then I think we'll be alright, just that perhaps we just know that it's gonna be put on the agenda, and Councilmember Bagley, I, I would agree with, with you, is, I, I would hate to put undue pressure on the mayor as one of the two that set the agendas, so it's better to, as Eugene has suggested, and I would agree, it's better to direct the city manager to, if there's four votes, to put something on the agenda, to have it, that way, we all have the information, the public has the information, and we're not perhaps skirting some open meetings legislation.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you Mayor Coombs, jumping in line for council comments real quick, if everyone goes to O'Shea's tonight, off council, I will pay. But you, but everyone has to go. We need bonding.
Okay. Alright. City manager, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor and Council.
City attorney, any remarks?
Mayor and Council, I did want to raise one thing. I, I have requested executive session for my performance review on August 23rd. Next week, I intend to start the process, lay out the schedule for you, it'll be similar to past years, I welcome any input, if anybody wants to see anything different, it seems like the past process has been pretty successful, it's not set in stone, but it's, it's what I've seen work in the past, so... Not, 23rd I will be, maybe after that not.
Alright, thank you. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Is it going?
Yep.
Everybody in?
I'm in.
Come on Gabe.
Come on Gabe.
Come on. If you go, I'll spice it up.